Um, so I just wanted to. Um, because I'm a town hall. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I took the look at it and you know, I'm not against this. I think it's great. But if you see the way that these guys put it on, I mean, the work. You street lots of hours as well.
Yeah, the big stuff is actually.
Typically, how all these fields is managed is to allow some of the. Probably Charlie's. That comes from elimination laws. You almost work all this stuff. So that's going to be a never. Very much. I mean, is here we go. They go for a lot of. You start raise that.
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll can all take showers, the lawn scattered.
It might really make a difference. I don't deal with sustainability too often. Like I mostly deal with my board over down at the celebration area and then I have quite a few parts down. So I understand each town gets different. This will. I follow some. You know, the situation part, I can do all of that. Um, so I also, you know, I was just kind of carrying this because, you know, I, I plan on calling up. And well, how long? Sign, letting, you know, all that stuff. But, you know, the driving. Oh, you. It's very.
Problems, I mean, some problems.
I put my crowd board there. At five.
Because some of these right now.
Test. One, two, three. Yeah, it's a minute. Okay. Yep, thank you.
I know. But Paul said. That's why I led with that today.
All right, let's go and get started. Do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the class of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, domination under God, invincible for liberty and justice for all.
If you would please, roll call.
Council member Roberts.
Here.
Council member Morganelli.
Here.
Council member Hardel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Womack.
Here.
Mayor Winkoo.
Here. Now Edward, would you mind doing our prayer again today? Thank you.
Let's pray. Almighty, ever living God, we do well always, never ready to give thanks and praise, and we're especially grateful to give to you this night, this time, this place, this gathering of people. And we all call you good. For our holy spirit, blessing upon each and every one, guide, guard, direct us, protect us, nurture us, and use us, because we do the chosen. Good? We pray this in Jesus' name, and say amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Thank you, okay. Just move right along here, we have, um, a couple of resolutions here. If you would like to, if you would please, we get ready, two thousand twenty-five and one ninety.
Okay, the first one will be resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one ninety. A resolution of the town of, council of the town of Montbird, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the town of Montbird, Lake County, Florida, from, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six, providing an effective date. The fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six operating millage rate is two point eight three zero zero mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of two point six five six one mils by six point five five percent.
All righty. You want to go ahead and, um, show those slides now, Paul?
All right. So council just, I know we have a lot of members here and the public and, um, I just wanted to kind of just briefly go over the budget. I know we've had two workshops, so these are the numbers you saw from our last meeting. But the first slide, just to let everybody know, um, I think it kind of shows the fiscal responsibility that the council and the town hall team have been working toward. We have the lowest millage rate in Lake County by far compared to all the other ones. Um, we're the very first one at two point eight three mils and the highest, um, seven point five-ish, looks like it goes up to, seven point five mils. Our general budget, so the general budget, these are things such as the property taxes, sales tax, um, things along that line. And that shows you the amount we have budgeted into each county or, excuse me, each budget category. So town council involves the operations of the town, mainly for the town council, uh, which has stipends and, um, workman's comp, things along that line, and some of the mills that we provide. Uh, financial administration, um, is the finance department, um, for operating, um, the town and the finances, audits, things along that line. Um, legal councils for, obviously, legal council, um, permitting, um, the five hundred fifty-three thousand. Um, that category is kind of an in and out. Um, that is largely, mostly paid by fees that developers pay then for the services that we provide to our contractors. Uh, public safety mainly comes out from, um, funds that we collect from the various sales tax and stuff at one eighty-seven, which is up a little bit. Um, our fire control is just taking care of the building that we own and that's handled through a separate property tax. Uh, solid waste is for the trash service, um, public works, um, is, uh, for the work they do around town, um, taking care of the town and the parks, things along that. Roads and streets also involves, um, public works, um, employees, but also the funds when we do sidewalks and repairs and things along that line. Um, special events, um, the hundred forty-two, so that's our Christmas program, Mont Bird Day, um, our Halloween festival. And that number is partially funded by donations we get from towns and sponsors, um, through there, so it's just not a, out of tax dollars kind of thing. Um, cemetery, um, just helps take care of our cemetery and then our library operations, which again, we get funds from Lake County as well, some small funds that operate that, then our parks and rec department. So when you kind of look at our budget breakdown, there's a graph, so you can see how the budget is broken down, um, as a percentage-wise, um, within the budget and how that spreads out. Um, next is just our water. Um, the water department's a very employee intensive for operations, just from, uh, the, from running it to, um, monitoring it, doing the DEP regulations, putting meters in, things along that line. Um, our water budget is about the same as we had last year, one point two oh seven. Um, every year, um, council, I will let you know, I've, I've been looking at the numbers, um, every year, we have an automatic five percent increase that starts in April. Um, I believe, um, once we get the numbers coming in, we should be okay not to do that increase again this year, um, that we can stay steady at our current rates, um, which most towns are having pretty significant increases in their utility services. In fact, uh, Claremont just sent us a notice of a pretty large sewer increase for their rates going forward. So that's something I'm, I'm pleased to announce that, um, we're managing the system well, uh, we're getting it more efficient and our town hall team's doing a great job with that. Um, capital projects is a big one, um, that we have in there. Uh, we have, um, right around forty-six million dollars with, uh, worth of grants. Most of those are for stormwater projects. Um, the, the really big one for the town from a financial standpoint is the thirteen million dollars for the water system. Some of those water system repairs at some point would have been mandated by DEP, which would have caused significant increases in rates or, um, millage increases to offset, um, the water use. We're going to get everything this town hopefully should need probably for the next twenty to thirty-plus years, uh, without increasing anybody's rates or taxes to fund that portion of it. You know, operations aside, that's the water tank, redundant wells, LFA wells, um, bringing in R C U P, things along that line. And then the rest of them are just kind of miscellaneous, um, um, funds and grants that we have, um, that we're finishing up on. Uh, outside of that, council, that's just kind of the general budget presentation, just a big broad overview. Um, your town council has spent, um, two budget workshops where they've gone into great detail over the numbers back and forth, so this is the culmination of what we have now. That's all I have for you, mayor, unless you have any questions for me.
All righty, great. Um, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody'd like to speak about anything on our budget or anything at all about any, any topic? Please feel free to come up and talk. Sure, sure, come on up. I'm sorry? Yeah, anything, cause it, if you got something, well, I think, um, she, yeah, come on up.
My comment to Paul.
Thank you.
How do I use? Like that?
There you go.
Okay. So I'm going to read from this because I wrote a lot of it out and I've been doing some research and I can't remember it all and I don't want to miss anything I have to say to you guys, so, um. So this is John and Candy Key's recommendation to the town regarding, uh.
Can everybody hear? Okay. If you speak a little closer to the mic.
Here?
Yeah. Raise your hand if you can't hear it now.
Is this better? Oh, I can hear.
Yep.
Okay. Um, as you know, the town manager's responsibility is to implement the plans approved by the town council, not to make development or infrastructure decisions independently. This role requires experience, professionalism, and dedication, qualities Paul consistently demonstrates. Our observations over the past five years since Paul's been here is he doesn't approach his role with a personal agenda. He shows a commitment to Montbird's growth and success, often working long hours to oversee projects. On most days, he can be found downtown supervising projects and even working along the public works team. I see him there myself. Um, and he cares about the citizens evidenced by the hours he and his wife have devoted in their volunteering endeavors during the holidays. Paul is approachable and responsive. He's readily, readily answering questions and discussions about town matters, matters with residents. He demonstrates a strong knowledge of policy execution, fiscal management, and municipal operations. His leadership is valued by his employees who speak highly of his guidance. With Willow Ridge almost at completion, Paul has already successfully navigated the L D C. Having been down the learning curve and the development of the Ozgood property being imminent, we need his expertise to ensure design and building standards continue to be met. Most town managers will not get this involved with developers and builders, but that's more kudos for Paul. My research indicates the average tenure of a town manager is five to eight years, which I was really surprised to see that. And it's often shortened by political shifts within councils or boards, so that makes sense. Paul took a significant cut in pay to come to Montbird. At his stage in life, and I can say that, Paul, because I'm older than you, at his stage in life, he is doing what anyone would do to secure his future. It's only right his salary be competitive with other Lake County town managers. Montbird would be at a loss to see Paul leave due to a salary conflict, or worse, to have another town recognize his value and hire him away. So we respectfully encourage the town council to supporting Paul in his role, recognizing his contributions, and ensuring Montbird retains his leadership for the benefit of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, well, all righty, anybody else like to talk? Come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Talking about the role of the town major is, is more than a role of that, it's the role of this entire town. We'll get to you, Paul. We need to take a really brief walk through memory lane. If anybody remembers ten years ago, this November, the fireworks going off over Lake Florence, we started a decade of reconstruction here in this town. I've been here over half my life and I plan on my next address being right over here at Franklin and Division. You know, I'm, I'm going to ride the place out here and I really have found a home, thanks to y'all. We started out ten years ago in a whole new direction, uh, uh, way we went. Things have changed dramatically. I can cite little incidences and stuff that happened. I've got a bad habit of paying attention to what happens around town and yes, let's try to learn from it. Well, we sure have and we've appreciated this decade of reconstruction we've gone through here. I just want to cite a couple of examples, which I'm leading up to something. Surveying the town, surveyed the whole town around here. One time I was with the surveyors back in the Grove many years ago and they would, he'd take the aerial photographs and the surveyor said, "Could the place ever have an earthquake?" Yeah, I said, "No." He says, "Like, the whole town like shifted about thirteen feet east." You know, we've had this, people were playing lawn darts with property markers. All right, this went on for ninety years and it started coming to a stop. And then to get to where we are today with a town major and the government and the structure we have, it took the determination of a leader and it took his courage to surrender the strong mayor structure that we had beforehand. And that was quite a step to take. It's like giving up the ultimate authority, but the ultimate authority we sell so many examples of did not work good. I get elected mayor, I don't like Joe, I put a fire hydrant in his driveway my first week in office. And that's the way things happen. We are now following rules and regulations. You know, there's more of a structure here. I don't think there's nobody in this town that cannot walk in the town hall and get a clear understanding of what is going on. All I would ask of all the people listening tonight, please do it. Please do it. Pay attention to what's going on here. We appreciate what you did, Joe, i- in changing the structure and we appreciate you getting a town major. Town majors, like the lady said, yes, there's a short distance, five to eight years, okay? That was a very, that was probably the most nervous thing you did was hiring a town major. I kid Paul about being the best town major we've ever had. Yeah, but you know, for all, the example is, and I think we did well. If you just stop and look, I'm not going to prolong this thing longer because I could ramble on a little bit. What has been accomplished? Where'd the money come from for doing this street? Where'd the money come from, from doing the library? This, that, and the other, and so much more that happened. Yes, a lot of property markers were put back where they belonged. Yes, you had to remove some structures off of city property, et cetera, et cetera. Was everybody happy in town? Of course not. But we now follow rules and regulations. I know if I want to put something up at my house, very simple, go about getting permitted and getting it done. Everybody else has to do that. These little things are very important. And I, I think it's because of the quality of the town major we have right now, the quality of our administration down hall is why we're at here today. Paul, you're, you're worth it and we appreciate it. Joe, town council, we appreciate what you've done during this ten-year period and I hope it continues a little bit longer. Any questions?
Thank you. It was a team effort. Thank you.
It is, total team effort.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir. And here, here comes one of the team.
Jim Lay, one seven three two eight First Street. I'm standing here not just to talk about the administration, but to talk about the employees of this town. We have a good set of employees. They work hard, they do their job. Now, we don't pay them overwhelming amount of salary. I mean, we're a small municipality, we don't have a lot of money, but we can give them some things like a fourth, a not, a Friday off every week. Now, I remember when Joe first proposed that Friday off every week, I'm thinking, people are going to raise, heck, they didn't. They accepted it and the employees are thrilled with it. Because you, if you can't give them money, give them benefits. Make them happy. I'm going to go back a little bit of my career, spent thirty-five years in Jacksonville and some of the top ranks and I was an H R director. City of Jacksonville decided in the mid-nineties that they were going to take all the old people and retire them out because they paid too much money for them and bring in all these people at a younger salary. Wonderful concept. Didn't work with it, darn. We lost all our good help. I've always categorized employees into three groups, stars, solid citizens, and problem children. Now, who left? The retired out was the stars. They had jobs lined up. Who else left? The solid citizens, they could get a job any. Who stayed? The problem children. And what did you replace them with? We had something like three percent unemployment. We replaced them with the unemployables. Fast forward ten years and who's your supervisors now? Those unemployables. So you have to look at the long-term stability of, of a government. And when we decided, and Joe Pat wanted to push this thing for the idea about doing a, a town manager, I thought it was great. We're moving forward. I sat there and listened to all the candidates, was tickled pink with Paul. Saw that man working on the equipment, paying attention to what the employees doing and then getting his hands dirty at the same time. You don't get that often. Now, all the other employees deserve those raises too, because if you don't give them the raises, you don't give them the money, they leave. Turnover rate has cost you a lot of money in training and all the other stuff, so you end up losing your money through turnover. I would like us to pay our employees a decent wage. I know we can only pay them so much. Retain Paul, retain our employees. Why do we retain employees besides good working condition? Beautiful locale, they always say in real, real estate, locale, locale, locale. Well, heck, guys, who wouldn't want to live in Mount Bird, right? And so because of that, we get to pick a lot of people. But I also noticed that we don't have the turnover rate like we used to, when we had a part-time mayor running the show. Now we got solid, professional, leadership, solid, professional, most of these people are stars, who are, who are doing quite a bit of job with this, for this town. So thank you for letting me give you my comments.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. All righty, um, anybody else like to talk to council?
John Orlano, one seven five three one, County Road four fifty-five. So I remember, I don't know, five, six years ago, seven years ago, whatever it was, the idea of hiring a town manager, a town manager came up and, and Joe, you remember, I looked right at you and I said, "Y'all are nuts. We don't need a town manager, it's a little, little town. What do, what do we need a town manager for?" I'm not afraid to stand up here and say I was wrong. I mean, we've got a, a great guy. I've had the privilege of working alongside him, building this library. The guy cares. He's got heart. And if anybody here had the privilege to work with the guy, they'd see, he's not here just to collect the paycheck. So take it for what it's worth, but I think we did a, a good thing and congrats to you guys for. Hi, I'm Josie Weiss, one seven three four three Tenth Street, in Mount Bird. I've been on planning and zoning for about eight years, so we come to most of the town council meetings, and we've heard all the things that Paul does, all the grants he's brought in, and, and we're like so many other people have said, when we're out walking, he's very often out doing the work that needs to be done by other folks, and we're so grateful for Paul. Well, I've heard through the grapevine and other places that there's been some controversy over his salary, but I just wanna say that we believe he deserves the highest raise you can possibly give him, because he deserves it. Last night at town council, he mentioned he's brought in forty-seven million dollars, and I think that's just the current grants. So, I mean, that's worth a ton. I mean, that worth, that's worth every penny you could afford to give him. So, I think we need to give him a pat on the back and say, "Go, Paul," and give him the maximum, maximum amount you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie, thank you. Yes, next. I really like seeing all these people come to the meeting.
Hi, Elska Palmer, seventeen six oh six Third Street. I would also like, I really liked what you wrote. I didn't come prepared like this, but I wanna tell the council, I really, really appreciate what Paul does. He is so attentive, so knowledgeable, the grants that you spoke about, it's enormous, it's worth so much. And as a business owner, I can say, when you have a staff that is loyal, that is dedicated, hardworking, and you lose that person, you lose more than just that, but the knowledge, the, the energy, I see how you lead your team. You can have Paul maybe, if he were to go away and hire somebody else, I doubt you'll see that next person with his or her spouse, walking through town with the roundup taking care of weeds. My husband and I would drive through town, and when we first moved here, we're like, "Who is that?" Oh, that is Paul with your wife, so amen. We think that's wonderful. Anyway, I'm really like not together with my thoughts, but I think compensation packages for all the staff members should be with everyone else, and yes, let's keep Paul pleased. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, Kalina Myers, one seven three one three Second Street. I also came to just comment on the privilege of being able to work with Paul. The last couple of years, I've served on the strategic visioning committee, I serve on the playground committee, and the centennial committee for the town. And volunteering, it's funny, when I first started, I, I said, "Paul, I think, you know, I, I feel bad, because, all of you, you get beat up on social media a lot, and I know it's, it's not, it's not fun, right? And that's why I tend to stay out of politics completely. I like to do volunteering behind the scenes, most people don't even know that I've been volunteering here." But I said, "You have done so many amazing things for our town since you've become our town manager, and of course, I see the pretty things, I see the signs, I see the dog park, the pickleball courts, and the, and the fun things, right?" And so, I said, "We need to talk about this, like, we need to make a video, we need to really promote all the ma- amazing grants that you've brought into town." And he goes, "Okay." I said, "Can you make me a list?" And he was like, "Sure." And so, my list said pickleball court, basketball court, dog park, and his list said drain fields and, and road construction, and this, and this, and that, you know, it was like fifty things, and mine was the pretty things on top, you know? But, I, I think, I understand, I see in social media, we don't even have a stoplight. I agree, I know we don't have a stoplight. But when you have a town that has two hundred employees, you have, that's work spread out with two hundred employees, when you have a town that has ten, ten people have to do all the work. Paul's working seven days a week, Kathy's right beside him, I, I too. On Saturday mornings, I'm at the dog park every Saturday morning, and him and Kathy are, are out at the butterfly gardens picking weeds, they're walking around town, picking up garb, whatever needs to be done, they're setting up tents. I can guarantee you, no other city manager is setting up a tent for an event, guaranteed. I think that our, our city employees do deserve the raises that have been requested. I think Paul definitely deserves it. He is a wealth of knowledge, we've been fortunate for him to be here, to bring in the amount of millions of dollars in grants that he's brought to our town, the improvements he's done. So, I just wholeheartedly wanted to speak in, in support of all the budget requests.
Thank you very much, thank you. Yeah. I gotta invite more people than this. Alrighty, anybody else like to talk to the council?
John Orlano, one seven five three one, County Road four fifty-five. So, I remember, I don't know, five, six years ago, seven years ago, whatever it was, the idea of hiring a town manager, a town manager came up, and, and Joe, you remember, I looked right at you, I said, "Y'all are nuts. We don't need a town manager, it's a little, little town, what, what do we, we need a town manager for?" I'm not afraid to stand up here and say I was wrong. I mean, we've got a, a great guy, I've had the privilege of working alongside him, building this library. The guy cares, he's got heart. And if anybody here had the privilege to work with the guy, they'd see, he's not here just to collect the paycheck. So, take it for what it's worth, but I think we did a, a good thing, and congrats to you guys for, for finding him.
Thank you very much, that's, appreciate it. Alrighty. One more.
John, John Hotman, one seven one two seven Ninth Street. Just echoing that, I've, I've been around for a decent amount of time here in Mount Bird, came in oh one when I moved here, so I'm not quite the old-timer that some of you guys are. I've known you for a while, though. So, I, I can say that I have some historical knowledge of, of this little town and, and how special it is. So, kinda agree with John too, that if you would've said, "Do we need a town manager?" I would, you know, back in the day, I was like crazy. But I can tell you without a doubt, the relationship with the academy is strong and good. I can tell you that, you know, just speaking with someone else recently, that you take care of the people that make the, the wheels turn, and if you have a business, you understand that. And so, your employees that are, are critical to operations, I think Paul has gotten to easily say that he's critical to operations. So, take care of the people that are critical to your operation. So, I don't even know the numbers, Paul, but if you're a businessperson and you understand how to make it work, and you understand how competitive the markets are in finding good people, you need to, you need to figure out how to make it work.
Thank you very much, thank you. I sure appreciate everybody coming to our budget meeting. Anybody else like to talk? Alrighty, go ahead and bring it back to council for discussion on Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one ninety, which is okay, and pretty much okay in the budget that we have in place. Is there any? I'm sorry?
It's setting the mileage.
Yep. So, anybody on council have anything you wanna talk about?
So, I've always said, I'm gonna listen to residents, and I've heard you all, and the one thing I'm gonna ask Paul, how many full-time and part-time employees do we have again? I think it was a total of thirteen, right?
Yeah, I think it's eleven and two.
Eleven and two. Alright. So, the one thing I hear from residents is that, how amazing our staff is as a thing, so, I, I'd actually like to propose then at this point, that we also give all full-time employees a ten thousand dollar bump on top of that six percent to Matthew, as well as a five percent bump with that, I'm sorry, for part-time employees, five thousand dollars and six percent then as well. That way, we are giving care of not just you, but also our employees as well.
Well, now, that, that's not what we did in the budget, I'm not, I don't, I'm, so what we have to do to do something like that, is take many away from something else. So, we gotta add that, or, or you see, it's a, it's a, you know.
Then I think, I don't, we need to review it before we finalize, that's just my suggestion, I think our, our staff is just as, as good as Paul is, and I think without our staff, Paul wouldn't be as efficient, so I do wanna take care of our staff as well as taking care of Paul.
Okay, how do you guys think about that?
Again, where, let's figure out how we can take the money from.
You're saying an extra hundred and ten thousand dollars going through the salary? Yeah.
I can say that, before Paul got here, we were thinking, and I do feel that we do keep up with those positions salaries, and, you know, they gotta get, a normal percentage of a raise, you get like three percent raises. A government entity has two different positions, we have cost of living raises, and, and usually three percent, usually those both, two, six percent, maybe five, six percent. So, a lot of people don't understand that, and I did, when I actually started running the bases, and I found out that they get a lot more than I got when I was at the corporation. So, what we did is, is we did the market analysis like four times, I did a little Jim Jason and Fallow, like four times before we got here, and I really feel, it's been a year, I really feel that we are at the speed on the positions that I've been here for as far as our competitive salaries. And I haven't heard Paul bring up anything, anything to increase. Well, the newest position he has is, in five years ago, when he showed up, we were, we were, it was a big, and Jim, Jim Lake, there was a big argument and discussion in the news, on Jim Peacock, he kept beating us up about paying him the, the salaries. And we had one guy come, Joe, I think it might've told you, that's the name or something in there, and I would've thought he would've looked into the salary, Joe, well, he came up here and, he's standing right there, and talking to us, and we're like, like, he's like, we're looking at the union workers, I'll tell you, and he says, "No, I didn't look at that, I just figured it was this, you know, mid-range job I could get." And we told him, he said, "That, that, well, I don't know, do I know about this, I said?" So, I'm glad that happened, so we were able to get Jim Peacock to step up a little more to where we could hurt Paul, but we did it here in, on the basis of great, and we've been trying to catch that up every year. Unfortunately for us, when you start looking at the late counties, thirteen cities, and with their, I think a ton of them have a city manager, the increases the city managers have gotten in the last five years, with, with increases. The market adjustment does, I do feel market adjustment justifies the increase of his hand, and his positions, I don't, uh, what is, are back on in any way, just.
Well, Paul has mentioned several times, Paul has mentioned several times, our employees being pushed, so I just wanna ensure that we're not, that's not the situation. And, I mean, even if you wanted to drop that, sorry, cut that down, five thousand is full-time, two and a half for part-time, and that brings it to sixty. The increase in law enforcement could cover the majority of that. That's just one cut they're putting in, I mean, in my concerns.
We had three positions, two, three positions.
That's true, but.
I'm gonna have to tell you another thing.
They are, again, the residents, I mean, again, you gotta listen to what a resident say, and I've been open on what I, what I feel about the salary, I'm gonna do the day, I've always said, I'm gonna listen to our, our constituents, and what I'm saying to them is that not just Paul, but our own staff is, is important.
Is doing a good job.
So, I don't wanna lose them, and I'd rather, I'd like, I'd like to do that. So.
I've been paying attention to how he's saying, as much as much as budgets are doing their budget right now too, and, I mean, I feel like our employees are, are paying a little higher than theirs are, I mean, I'm sure there's some differences here and there, but I feel like it's pretty competitive where it's at, and they are getting a three percent, um, cost of living increase and a three percent salary. I don't think I saw either of the cities or towns proposing that for their, their employees.
I do kinda think that our, our current town employees are competitively compensating, that's not to say that, that I wouldn't welcome the opportunity to increase that thing, and perhaps that's something that we can consider for, for budget next time around, and I just think it's a little late in the game to start rehashing numbers. It's a good suggestion.
And we did get that, that bonus from cutting construction managers' positions.
Yeah, that was the one-time bonus, it's always take the bonus and put it towards salary, that's what actually, that would actually free up, I actually forgot about that time, so that would actually free up the money when we did that, that, for this year.
So, technically, we made, we didn't have law enforcement increases. Now, I'm saying, remove the budget, or the bonus, and use that for salaries.
Correct, yeah. I actually forgot about that, that's for a reminder.
Just the bonuses, or combine your, your law enforcement.
You remove the bonus and hit a law enforcement.
He's saying, we, we really have a hundred, that one, all she's taken out of, of public, our, our public safety count, which has a hundred and eighty-seven, so you're cutting out public safety when you have.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the, the decrease part of it all, I don't wanna cut anything from where we were, I'm talking about the, what we have in our budget for increase.
Okay, we, we do describe that five thousand for employees, is that what you're saying? So, there's two, or eleven, eleven, so that's fifty-five thousand, right?
Yeah, 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 I'd like to, same thing with Paul, which was ten thousand hours full-time, five thousand hours part-time, however, compromise-wise, I would do it five thousand for full-time, and two and a half for part-timers, which puts it about sixty thousand, that twenty-five hundred bonuses, and in the increases, and I think if you mean money, money over, still to do some increase on the, I don't have my calculator with me, but I think it'd be money, money over as well, for law enforcement as well.
There's a reason why we increased those, and that's a whole other discussion, why we put them there, and.
What about, what about reducing our monthly meals to doing a little quarter?
With the, yeah.
The monthly meals, that'd be a monthly quarter.
It's not a, yeah.
Well, we don't have much to get to.
It's a thousand dollars, it's a thousand dollars. It's, it's not, it's not like a thousand dollars.
No, bonus on top of that, we don't need much more.
Obviously, everybody's interested in doing, if you're, if you're, we, we always talk about, for these reasons.
Yeah, again, I, I think it's a great idea, I just think it's a little late in my budget year, going back and start making those changes.
Okay.
I have to agree with Carol's position on that, but if you look at our budget from last year, we're down three point two percent, which is almost a hundred and ten thousand, ninety-five thousand. Our budget's not going up, but we're decreasing the overall total budget to three point two percent. I have to kinda agree with Carol on this too, but it's, it's a little late to redo this, and, you know, it's our job, so there's no, no squealing on this side about having to work again, but I was just wondering, if we went back up to last year's budget, that compensates, we're not gonna have a decrease in our budget, we've got an increase from other states, or, that's going up, so we're gaining from that coming due, how do we play the numbers? If we can play the numbers, that's why, have a few hundred, hundred thousand, hundred and ten thousand like there, within three sixes, would basically be last year's budget, and, and especially change, change around, so.
So, you agree with Carol?
Well, I like that, you know, councilors more generally did, I, that's great, I think Grant has some great points too on that too, to go back and start all over again, says, wow, this is the level power to, to do it. I'm not opposed to it, but then we have to start all over again, say, what are we gonna come from, what are we gonna come back on, and that church gets a little dicey, uh, the microphone to be.
Well, the council, at any time from here, can do a budget amendment, it's not like we're over this, it's coming, so we can do a budget amendment one month from now, 'cause Paul says that, you know, after thinking about it, we should do some kind of paper on this, so at that point, we have to do a budget amendment, take the, our bank, so I would suggest, let's try that, so then, you know, we gather a little more attention to it.
When is the budget due?
End of September.
In December?
End of September. But we, we, our next budget, the final one is advertised on the twenty-fourth, so that's something we need to pass out.
We couldn't have any numbers, or even, you don't wanna do it?
Let me, let me ask you this this morning, what, what's the, what's the grand, grand bonus, we, we, we want the bonus, okay? And, and give us in, in the five percent, what's the, what's the grand credit for that?
Would be six, well, six thousand for.
And that actually, that covers the year, that's where the five percent is, well?
No, that's not counting Paul.
Okay.
That's what we need.
Correct.
That's not.
So, basically, you're, it's.
I'm trying, it's five fifty thousand, correct, fifty thousand.
Fifty sixes.
All right, well, I'm not gonna say it's a good idea with that idea, but I'll, I will do it out there, what do we have in general funds? Anybody wanna bet on that? And I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that, that would save us from having to go back and re-carb our budget.
We would actually need to find thirty thousand, that's all we would find, because if we're taking back that twenty-five hundred dollar bonus, that comes out to thirty, thirty thousand, unless my math is wrong, it could be.
Just a fifty million, so, double check, that's what.
No, we were originally gonna do the bonus script, the one-time bonus, which was twenty-five hundred, and I think my math may go off to twenty-five hundred, or times thirteen.
It was twenty-five hundred, how much reach are we leaving?
After removing the construction managing position, we're gonna compensate for money that we're gonna use source of bonus.
I don't know.
So, essentially, pull that back, that would offset the sixty that we need to come up.
So, that's what we didn't do, right? We didn't do the thirty-five thousand, is that what it was?
It wasn't, it wasn't like thirty-five thousand, there was still some expenses for that position, which roll over to next year's budget, but there would be an excess of twenty thousand dollars, and then split between the eleven full-time employees.
Did we, did, everybody, did we, you remember talking?
I thought, I thought we did.
Well, I guess, I mean, Paul, did you, Joe?
I, I think we ended the twenty-two, up to twenty-two hundred for performance bonuses, I think it was, we recall, the bonus, we, we, we had some, there's a little exercise we just, just do, we do kind of a little extra, but usually Christmas, we, we want to have one hundred dollars, I wanna say.
We're giving it pretty good bonuses, so, that might be, is that what you're saying, or any that we have on the side, is part of Christmas bonuses?
Yeah, correct, yeah, so, so we have, they can give up to a twenty-two hundred dollar Christmas bonus.
Right, but not extra bonus on top of that.
That's total, yeah, total.
So, yeah, right now, we have, it's a one-time shot, it's not a three sixes.
Right, so it's twenty-two hundred, so that's twenty, it's almost twenty-eight thousand and six hundred, so, we, I'm, I'm saying fifty, sixty thousand, or sixty thousand for, which we did give, five thousand for full-time, and then twenty-five hundred for part-time.
Okay, are you okay, two, two dollars, three, are you okay with giving employees a five thousand dollar bonus, are we working on the budget? We, we can rework the budget, given each employee a five thousand dollar bonus a year.
The, the, I would have some bonus, fold it in, can we increase that?
No, the bonus is twenty-two hundred dollars, we, we all will be paying it at Christmas, that's not extra.
Take it out?
I follow you, yeah, I follow you, I don't, I, I don't, yeah, Christmas bonus.
I do that as comfortable to pull out a general fund, you know, to help have costs of.
Right.
Definitely not in favor of rehashing the budget.
I mean, yeah, I'm fine with generalizing, I'm fine with me as well.
And what's the, what's the note, is it sixes?
It's, yeah, give you five thousand, I don't have my calculator, I'm probably, I'm gonna, so.
This is over the line. We don't need to increase these other five thousand dollars a year for, for marketing rate, that's why.
All right, how, how about this? We, there, there's some track options, okay? We don't agree next to how we're gonna wanna get a gun, but I, I think there's at least enough interest, okay? Let's, let's go ahead, stick with the budget that we have now, and once we get into the next fiscal year, as Mayor Joe suggested, we can search the background, make, make a minimum, and if we need to go back and make it retroactive, then we can have that opportunity as well.
Okay. I'd tell you, but, everything else, whatever's on your, your, your agenda, to make bold on this.
I'm about ready to make a motion that we go ahead and vote, so, change quick.
Make it.
So, we're getting a fork in the road, because our motion for, for the, at the one two point eight three, the budget that the, the line could be the budget for the red.
Yep. It's what, it's what, it's making a motion to make us. It's what, it's what he, is making the motion to make us a tax rate recharge, which is that this budget may not be a tax rate. So we would be okay with the budget, if we were going to do that. All the numbers there, they are, and then we'll be looking at it in the summer for the increases. Is that, you guys?
So if we actually lock in, we go in, it's one and three, you're all on with our.
Then we'll go to the end right now.
And we'll discuss it in December.
Then we'll be looking at it in December, and see if you wanna do one more extra bonus or increases. Which, these guys have.
I just, I just, that's just, sometimes I'm a little bit too far, it's covered it, but, um, I just reached my council. There are two positions I did include in the market adjustment, financing and clerk. And, um, I, I do, part of our job, as I said, as a charger, is to look and keep those. And, um, from a market standpoint, fiscal standpoint, um, I think we're gonna pretty aggressively follow our employees. And as experience grows, and I'm putting the clerk's position on the line, um, as she gets certification to get up to that three-year clerk, then that market does change. Where you'd probably look at some of those five thousand a month, and same way, finance some areas. There are some areas, those are probably areas that will happen with the most down the road. There are some areas right now that are really competitors, you know, that, that probably would put it a little bit higher. So, that's something I'm always analyzing, and you do have on top of the six, two market adjustments in this, 'cause I do that over here, analyze those positions, and look at what the other managers do. I get a huge spreadsheet from FLC that has across the whole state, but I particularly look at Lake County. And obviously, the, the reason I brought, I brought you guys, so you could see what the market is, is determine if there was a market adjustment. Because when you look at the market, my math doesn't match way out of line, and that's why I just asked you to consider that. And, you know, I didn't mean you really getting involved in those deliberations, I left that to the council, um, for you guys to decide what my value is to you. So, that, I just wanna confuse, 'cause you're dealing with me, I don't feel like you have to, 'cause I do that for my staff, is always look at the market, and if something does get out of line, or their training warrants that market adjustment, I will definitely come to you guys and say that, you know, we need to do something here. And I, I feel like I try to do that. Not that I wouldn't love to give that to, to all my staff, but, um, that might be a, a, another solution. And I appreciate what you actually did at the last meeting, is, is we could, as the year goes, and I know with all these grants, our staff can be busy, as our budget comes in, we can always look at adding another bonus or something extra on top. Um, when we do the salaries, I, not only do we gotta look at the salary, I gotta look at our FRS contributions as the percentage of the salary. So it's just not the sixty, it's the FRS, the, the benefits, we gotta do things along that line. Um, work with conflicts, have payroll numbers as well. So, there, there's a little bit more of a calculation that I think I would need a little bit more time to work on that, but, um...
What he's saying is the sixty will become an eighty-five, so we, if we did it one time, hit it in December, that would be better.
So.
Right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
Poaching, we're, we're good on the poaching.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not gonna deny, I know some of our staff are, what my staff tells me is they, they love working here, they love the environment. Um, it's a, it's a stressful job, um, they have fun, they laugh, they enjoy, they work hard, I, that's my expectation of them. Um, I give them an environment where they can excel and learn, and I don't, you know, I understand they make mistakes, and we, we work through the mistakes, clean up, so we don't make them again. So, um, I think, um, if you talk to most of my staff, I think they would find that they're here a lot because of, um, the environment. We offer good benefits, we offer the four-day work week, um, we offer generous PTO. So we, we check a lot of boxes just besides salary that some other cities aren't checking. And, um, we got a great team, not to say we won't lose some at some point, we got a really good team. I think we need to stay competitive, I feel like we're getting competitive. As that staff gets more training, we'll have to keep looking at the positions to make sure, and I encourage my staff to keep getting trained, keep getting there, 'cause I wanna come in at the next budget meeting. In fact, I told that to one of my staff members a couple of days ago, you need to get here so I can get you here. And, and that's, that's my job as the manager to come for you and, and share that with you, and, and let you know when we need to do that.
So, the, the answer to the poaching is, we're not worried about it right now.
No, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm really not overly worried about the poaching at, at the moment. I, a lot of towns are struggling with employees, I mean, I go to these manager meetings and they're like, we don't have employees. And I smile, I don't think I've lost anybody in the last five years, really. You know, outside of public, you know, a couple, a couple of public works, obviously, that kinda goes in and out, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so, if you wanna make a motion, make it.
I, I make a motion that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-five one nine zero as presented.
Is that a motion, I need a second?
Second.
One favor, say aye.
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 Again, say nay. I just have it, if you would please, twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-nine, thank you.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Montverde, Lake County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six, providing an effective date.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, oh, you wanna open to discussion? No, we just talked about it, didn't we?
Need to open it up to the public. Anybody wanna talk about this? Alright, I'll bring it back to the council. Anybody wanna talk about it? If not, make the motion.
I think this is starting, turned out to be like you say, it's better than, uh, butter on hot biscuits, pretty good, so.
Well, in that regard, I will make the motion that we, uh, we accept Resolution twenty twenty-five one eight nine as presented, with the caveat that we will probably come back around and revisit.
I second.
One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, say nay. I just have it. I gotta make a copy of this. Oh, you do? Okay, study. Oh, did he? Good, good. Alrighty, I guess that's it for tonight, I sure appreciate you all coming and helping us.
We need a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I second.
One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, say nay. Nay.